Call this meeting Wayne County Commissioners to order. Any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Move for approval.
Then move for approval second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pous.
Aye, passed. We do have claims of April 22nd.
Move for approval.
And move for approval second by Mr. Burns. Please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
And Mr. Pous.
Aye, passed. Before we move on this morning, one note. I sent a letter of intent over to OCR. Came in quickly that they had COVID-19 money that would be available up to $250,000. So Beth drafted a quick letter for me. I signed it and we sent that in that we would be applying for these funds. So what I would like to do is get a motion on the floor this morning authorizing the commissioners to apply for the OCR grant up to $250,000.
It was a letter of intent?
Uh huh.
Yeah, sorry. Now, I saw that come in. I was hoping we could beat that deadline, so.
Yeah, we did quickly.
Yeah, good. Yeah, that was under the wire. Now, I moved for approval for the commissioners to submit a letter of intent to OCR for a grant for COVID-19 expenses.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pous.
Aye, passed. Okay, Ron, you're up.
Right now, I'm working on the lease. I think I sent you a.
Copy.
Marked up copy of comments from the Health Department. My response, and there's some issues. I don't know if you had time to assimilate that or not, but at some point, we really need to kind of start peeling that onion and we can, don't need to do it right now. We can wait later in the meeting or, and go ahead with Bob. But that, those issues, I don't think any of them are terribly major, but I think.
We need to do each one one at a time. Yeah. Have you seen them, Mary Ann?
Yes, a lot of them, you know, were, we need to get Steve's input.
Oh, did you get Steve's comment?
Yeah.
Steve's comments were very good.
Did you get his?
Yeah, Steve's resolved a lot of the questions.
Right.
We need to have Steve in this conversation.
Right.
I'm also working on a maintenance agreement. I just got word from A.J. and George Sowers that they're close to taking title to the Elder Bearman Building, the city is. So they'd like to see what our maintenance agreement's going to look like. Steve's given me a pretty good detail of what we've spent money for, and I'll put that together. That'll be an agreement that'll also involve council, since I want them to be committed to make the appropriation.
Funding, right. Yeah, okay, very good.
Other than that, right now, that's, those are the main irons in the fire at this point.
And just to remind you, the deadline for the naming rights on the fairgrounds is the.
We haven't had any proposals, however.
Well, we have two groups that are interested, but nothing in writing at the moment. We kind of backed off of that when COVID-19 came, but we still have, I know, two parties that are interested.
And Ken reminded me that I need to get a consulting agreement ready for Bob on the all too pending time of his retirement.
Still May the 8th?
Still May the 8th.
Still May the 8th, all right, very good. We'll have you under contract by then. Okay.
You know, I think we need to extend the naming rights at the fairground. We can just do that by motion.
You certainly may.
I'd like, I think at this point, because we have so many unanswered questions about when things are going to open up and how the situation is going to be on the ground, that includes the fairground, so I'd just like to extend that deadline indefinitely until we have a lot of unanswered questions answered.
Okay.
So I move that we extend that naming rights deadline indefinitely.
Did you hear that, Denny?
Yes, I'll second.
All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pous.
Aye, passed.
Can we extend Mr. Warner's tenure indefinitely at the same time?
Well, we could do that. No, he'd sign that, though, of course.
I think he's smiling. I can't tell.
Oh, okay. Anything else, Ron?
Not right now.
Not now. Bob, you're up then.
So just a couple of updates first. The bridge on Economy Road, they've got the steel beams set and they're planning to pour the slab on this Friday.
Wow.
So it's moving right along. And then Bridge 77 on West Eaton Pike, they plan on starting it the first week in June. And the bridge on South Salisbury Road will start in August. So that's, they're moving along. Bridge 266 on North 24th Street, we are evaluating the construction inspection proposals and hope to have a choice there within the next week or so. 2025 federal aid projects. On Bridge 705 on Richmond Avenue, as we've talked before, when we applied, we had Bridge 712 and we were hoping to get both of those. Unfortunately, we weren't awarded 712, but those two still need to be done simultaneously. So what we want to do is go ahead and award the design contract and, I mean, have discussions with Endot about this, but we'll keep the two bridges separate, but everything will be done together. We'll just pay out of local funds for all of Bridge 712, and then the 705 will be paid 80/20. So I just wanted commissioners' approval to do that. I mean, they, they really need to be done at the same time. So that's, I mean, the approach slabs are only about 30 feet apart, and if we're raising one, we have to raise the other to, to keep everything in line when we add the concrete overlay on it.
So you want to motion to that back then?
I would appreciate that, yes.
Can you refresh our memory on what kind of money we're talking about? What's the 20% on 705 approximately?
20% on 705 will be around $2.5 million, so around $500,000.
It's a big bridge. And the 100% on 712?
That will be around $400,000.
But it would be a lot more if we had to have it stand alone?
Exactly, yes.
I move to go forward with the local expenditure alone on 712 simultaneously with the federal project on 705. Is that properly worded enough for you?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pous.
Aye, passed.
Okay. The next one is Bridge 191. I think there was some discussion that Mary Ann wanted to talk about that one. So I have prepared in the packet I gave you a sheet just for Heiney Road information, just to outline some projects with similar average daily traffic flows with, that have been replaced in the past five years. In 2015, we replaced Bridge 122, which has an ADT of 21, for $240,000. It's a 56-foot bridge. In 2015, we replaced Bridge 173 on Mineral Springs. It has an ADT of 117. It was through federal aid, the $200, $2.5 million, the county share being $500,000 of that project. And it's a 180-foot, 81-foot-long bridge, plus we did over a half-mile of roadwork in total on that project. Bridge, in 2016, we did Bridge 213 on Charles Road. The ADT is 48. That cost was $290,000, all by the county, 66-footer. Currently, we're doing Bridge 227 on Economy Road, 164 ADT. That was $567,000, and that's a community crossings project, so the county shares half of that. And then we were awarded Heiney Road, which has an ADT of 48. Our estimate is 1.78 million. It's a 166-foot-long bridge. The county share would be 356,000. And then we were also awarded Bridge 76 on Sample Road. The ADT is 146. Our estimate is 1.74 million. It's a 157-foot bridge. The county share is 348,000. So, and then just some additional data, the, these are the ones that have been, the ones above are the ones that have been replaced since I've been here, but we have replaced, oh, well, there are 14 bridges with an ADT less than 50. Five of those have been replaced within the past 20 years, and eight have been replaced in the past 30 years. One of those using federal aid. Then if we look at ADTs less than 100, we have 40 bridges. 13 have been replaced within the past 20 years, and 21 replaced within the past 30 years. A total of four of those using federal aid. If we go up to 150, you know, that's a line. Where do you draw that line about looking at them? But there's 62 bridges with an ADT less than 150. We've replaced 17 within the past 20 years, and 29 within the past 30 years. Eight of those have used federal aid. So just, just some background information on those. I, Mary Ann, if you want to explain some of your concerns.
This is great. You've engineered the decision-making process as only an engineer would. Thank you. I, I just felt that we hadn't finally closed the loop. You know, we've had a lot of discussion about the Heiney Road bridge, but I, Ken, did not really feel that we had finally drawn the circle in the closure of the loop on that decision. Lot of talk, but hadn't quite made the decision. And I am surprised, after other closures having brought citizen dialogue, shall we say, that I've had no complaints about the closure of Heiney Road in three years?
Probably four now.
Four, going on four? I mean, normally, when people are inconvenienced, they like to share that experience with me.
I think our discussion that we've had on Heiney Road was, one, the number of folks that actually use that road during the day, the 48, and we hadn't been able to get federal funding for that, and we were looking at the possibility of us funding that. And at the $1,007,000, we really weren't quite sure. We wanted to use our money to do Heiney Road, but I, I think since we've been able to get the federal funding, which we, you know, we kept applying, and we did get it this time, that it makes the whole situation different. 350, a big difference than in a $1,007,000. And so, you know, I can look much more favorably on Heiney Road today than what I could prior to that, when we were going to have to fund the whole project.
Yes.
Over $1,007,000. And it does fit in with other projects that we have done in the smaller road counts for individual bridges that we have. And I know that's a long span. It's one of our longer ones.
It's a confluence, isn't it?
It is. Bear Creek ties in right there with Whitewater River, and so you've got each coming in from each side of it, really, and then heads together on farther south.
Was it a school bus route?
It has been in the past. It wasn't currently, but.
Upon closure, it wasn't a school bus route?
Right.
Because there are quite a few homes on Heiney.
There are some, yes. Probably at least four or five I know of.
And it could, in the future, I mean, you know, roads and bridges are not just for today. This could, at some point, be an access point for the airport.
It is possible. Yeah, the airport's only probably 1,000 feet north of Heiney Road, maybe 1,500 feet, but it's not far.
And it could be an access point without a bridge? Is that possible?
No.
It's still got Whitewater.
It still has the Whitewater River.
That darned airport. It just didn't have to have a bridge. Denny, this is in your district, not mine, so maybe you've had citizen.
Well, I appreciate that. I do totally agree with Kenny. There's a, there's a psychological effect when you close a bridge. It makes us look like we're from a poor county, and we've got funding to do this bridge far more than we ever would have got on our own. So I think we need to proceed and replace the Heiney Road bridge.
Okay. The chair would so entertain a motion to proceed on Bridge 191, Heiney Road.
I move, so moved.
Very persuasive arguments. We haven't even mentioned the option of a low weight limit bridge, of a covered bridge, a possible tourist attraction. That has been a consideration.
It would cost more than.
Than this.
Than, I mean, they, they just built one down in Bloomington that was shorter than this. Like, they said about the limit of a covered bridge is maybe 120 feet, so you would have to have two side by side, and the one that they built down there was over $2 million.
Even a low weight limit?
Yeah, and it was a reduced weight limit. So it's really not economically feasible. It would have to be because of tourist attraction and other things, thinking that would be a better way to go.
Thank you. I needed that. I second the motion.
Call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pous?
Aye, motion passes. All right, Bob.
One more topic then. I have heard rumblings that there's, you know, potentially a stimulus package for infrastructure that may be coming, just to, again, get the economy back going. And so I'm raising the question, should we be looking at potentially having a couple of more bridges in the queue to get designed and then try to be ready if and when that package would come through? The, I attached, or I gave you a sheet in the packet that shows the, it's the one with all the colors highlighted, you know, the, all the ones that are already colored have, are funded. So we would look at 712, which we're already talking about that one. Because it's the whole five-year deal, I don't think it's one, you know, we want to look at. So my, my choice is for looking ahead for design. 47 on Northwest L Street here in Richmond, I think, is a likely candidate. It's been a remaining lowest sufficiency rated bridge, and it has over 6,000 cars a day, so it's a fairly short one, but it would need design. Mulberry Street has a sewer in the middle of the river under the bridge, so it has some issues. So I'm trying to work through, that's in Cambridge City. So I'm trying to work through Cambridge City on Green Street first, and then we'll go to Mulberry. So it's down the road a little bit, so I haven't thought that was one that we wanted to move forward with. Esteb and Centerville, the next two on the list, right now, they're not load-rated or anything like that, so they're, they're not, again, high on my list. Waterfall Road, we've already talked about, and I am moving forward with that one. But then the next two that I would move forward with would be South Street and Abington Pike, both of which are load-rated, so we have to watch when we take snowplows over them, and they, they can't be full of, of salt. So it, it, you know, to look into the future, I would look at Northwest L, South Street, and Abington Pike as bridges to at least complete the design for, that then could potentially be shelf-ready for, if there was a stimulus package.
Bob and I discussed this, and what you hear, you know, on the national scene about infrastructure, what they're talking about, whether this would come about, we do not know currently at this time. But there is one thing I know, that when it finally does pass, they're going to get these projects up and running just as quickly as possible. So that means those counties that would have road projects and bridge projects that are ready and on the shelf, because they'll hit you and say, you've got 30 days to get in here, or 45 days to get in and apply for this funding. It really would be to our advantage to move forward on these projects and have them on the shelves, that if this infrastructure funding does become available, we're ready to go. Just like the last time when we had the paving projects already, we got 21 miles of paving in place, because we had everything done, it was on the shelf, and we were able to apply for it right away. So I really think we should authorize Bob to move forward. Actually, all these projects would not hurt us to have the design work done, and we have the funding that we could move forward on this.
Right. Yes.
And now, I think, is the time to do that.
So these were not yet in the tenure plan?
That's correct. They are not.
They'd be in like the 12-year plan.
Well, again, if, if funding is available, then we'd move them up, but we have certain design fees in the tenure plan for future bridges, and so, I mean, there's money that's available, again, you know, with the tenure plan, even after 2026, when we've completed all of these federal aid projects, we would still have over $2.5 million in the tenure, in this tenure plan, which out in years seven, eight, and nine, I didn't have bridges to build it up somewhat. So by the end of the 10 years, we're back up close to the $5 million. But if monies are available, again, to me, it would make sense to look at spending some of that to, to go after these if they're ready, and if they're not, we hold on to them and then can bid them out in year seven or eight, or something like that. So that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Would you mind backtracking to Centerville Road again, because it's got a lower sufficiency rating, a higher ADT? Why, why did you skip over Centerville Road, number 18?
Right now, it's, it's not load-rated or anything like that, so I'm, I'm looking at trying to help out the county as well as possibly bus traffic or anything else by getting the, some of the ones that are load-rated. I know on Abington Pike, the, it's right down by Stonehenge, so that's, you know, they have the gravel trucks still coming out of there, so I think that's an important one to, to replace. And then South Street in Higgers Town, it's right there by the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
So, you know, those two are on roads that, and South Street has a decent rating.
That's a, that's a higher ADT than I would have guessed on South.
Yes, so in, in trying to get those bridges off the list, so we don't have to worry about them, and, and so that's, yeah, that's my logic for those two. I mean, yeah, Esteb Road and Centerville Road, you know, those two would certainly be on the list at some point, but they're not, I, you know, again.
They're not load-rated.
They're not load-rated, so that's one of the main factors.
Thank you. I just didn't quite, I see that high ADT, and it just kind of jumped out at me.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Well, no harm, and do you think you could get them shelf-ready before the 8th of May?
Probably not. The 8th of May, what year?
What year?
That's a lot of work between two weeks.
Yeah.
Which, which brings me to another question. Can Amy help move this toward shelf-ready? We need to talk about her workload going forward in May.
Bob's still going to be available to us.
I know, but, you know, there's.
So he'll be able to coordinate all of our projects.
Yeah, I mean.
But we, I mean, we need to do that judiciously, Ken.
Okay.
Is this something she could work on, moving these toward being shelf-ready or not?
Well, I mean, certainly.
Some things, but.
Once, once they get turned over to the engineering firm, I mean, they come back to us for questions, but it's, it's mainly, they're working on it, you know, so we don't have a lot of input at that point in time. I mean, yes, they will come back with questions, you know, email maybe every other week or so with their status on everything, so it's not like you're, you're doing a lot of work on, on any one project, so. So I, I don't see that as an issue.
Okay, good, because we, we want you to enjoy your retirement, rather than having us knocking on your door every.
Chair would so entertain a motion to authorize the county engineer to move forward on these projects.
So moved.
Short second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Okay, aye.
Wait, I'm fast.
He didn't get me.
Mr. Pous.
Aye, aye. Motion passes.
There's, within reason.
Sure, I understand.
You understand what we mean by move forward.
I do. I also included the March financials. We're still right at the $5 million at this point.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And at this time, we'll take about a five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene again. We'll reconvene this meeting, the Wayne County Commissioners. Debby Berry, Wayne County Clerk.
Good morning. I just wanted to take the opportunity to let commissioners know about some of the updates about voting. As everyone knows, the election has been postponed till June the 2nd. So the Election Commission met on Friday, and there has been some updates, which they provided with all of the deadlines. When they postponed the election, they automatically moved out those deadlines for, like, when voters' registration would end, when we could send out absentee ballots, and all the things that go along with the upcoming election. So on Friday, they met, and they made some more changes. One of the most significant changes, of course, as you know, we always have in-person absentee voting at the courthouse for 29 days before the election. So that has been eliminated. We're encouraging voters to vote by mail. So we've always had the clerk's office and one of our vote centers open the two Saturdays before the election. They've eliminated one of those Saturdays. So we actually will not start voting in person, early voting at the vote centers, until Tuesday, May the 26th, because Monday is Memorial Day. So we will vote from Tuesday, May the 26th, to Saturday, May the 30th, and then on Monday, until noon at the courthouse only, they can vote in-person absentee until noon. So those are the most significant changes, eliminating one of the Saturdays, and of course, our in-person voting. We are encouraging people, we have the mail-in application. We are encouraging people, we have the mail-in application on the website. Also, there's a link to the IN.gov, Election Division, to obtain an application for mail-in ballots. Our most significant concern, of course, is safety for the voters.
Can you speak up just a little bit? I just can't quite hear.
Okay, I'll take off this, maybe I can hear. A public thank you to Jane Bumbolo, who made these for all of my staff.
Oh.
And she's making them for the election, and poll workers also. So, thank you, Jane. So, the most significant changes, like I said, is the elimination of in-person absentee voting at the courthouse and the Saturday before early voting.
But then there is courthouse voting on June 1?
Yes, till noon.
From what time?
8:30 a.m.
8:30 to noon on June 1?
On June 1.
That's the only courthouse voting?
Well, the week of early voting, Tuesday through Friday.
So, the courthouse will be open for voting that whole?
Yes.
Week? 8:30 to?
4:30.
4:30.
Uh-huh. On Saturday, the 30th, it'll be from 9:00 to 4:00. 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday.
At the courthouse too?
Courthouse and Coleman only.
So, the difference is no courthouse voting that normal 29 days, just the seven days?
Correct.
That's the big difference?
That's the big difference. And of course, that is subject to change.
What's your sense out of the Secretary of State's office? Do you think June 1, June 2 is going to hold?
I do. I do think that the election will be on June 2nd, but there's lots of rumblings, nothing official about going to all mail-in ballot, no in-person voting, but we haven't got that word yet. I think it depends on how much our governor opens up, you know, and not as many restrictions.
How many machines do you anticipate needing for the large two voting centers at First English Lutheran and Coleman? Because six feet of separation might not be enough room in those, even those large centers.
I don't really think we'll have as much problem in those larger centers. As far as we know to date, all of the centers with the election being moved to June 2nd are still available, but we got word yesterday that one of our centers is asking that we only use half of that facility, because it has converted to a food bank, which is very necessary at this time. So, they're only going, saying that we can only use half of that facility, which will put a strain on the number of machines that we can put in there. However, if we have a high rise in mail-in ballots, there won't be as many people going to the vote centers, you know, to vote, because they will have voted by mail-in ballot.
So, you anticipate using the same number of machines?
We do, at this time, depending on how many mail-in, it's hard to tell, you know, right now. But we are getting an increase in mail-in ballots. They had been not off kilter from previous elections, presidential elections. But yesterday, we started getting more, you know, on a daily basis. We probably get anywhere from 50 to 75 every day now, which is a lot more.
And what's the deadline to request absentee ballot?
May the 21st. Let me confirm. I believe all these dates, since they've changed, it's hard.
Now, when a voter returns that absentee ballot, they have to put their own postage on it, right?
Not the ballot.
Really?
The application they do. But because it's election mail-in...
There was some voter financial cost.
Yeah. So, if we get a request for a mail-in ballot by an application, then on that application, because it's a primary, they have to tell us if they want a Democrat or Republican ballot. So, then, we send them that ballot in a secured envelope, with a secured envelope for it to come back, that we put the postage on. But the application, they have to pay the postage.
So, that is pretty costly for a return postage. What does it cost for us to pay for a party primary selection vote?
It's, we get a special rate, so it's 50 cents for each envelope. So, every voter that requests that, that's a dollar per voter. We have 41,000 registered voters in Wayne County, so that's about $41,000 in postage. If every voter requested one, of course, they don't. They do, and in the primary...
That's 50 cents or a dollar, when that comes back from the...
50 cents to them, and we give them an envelope with 50 cents postage on it, so it's 50 cents back, so it's $1 per voter.
Oh, you actually put stamps on it?
Well, our postage meter, Mary Ann.
So, the postage meter, you actually do it, it's not like, it's not like it's printed on there, so you don't have an expense if they don't send it back? You have the expense whether or not they send it back?
Yes.
Really?
Yes. A lot of voters put a stamp on it also, but...
So, you run the postage meter whether or not they send it back?
Yes. We're required to do so.
I mean, you can't have a business reply meter, so you only pay for it if they send it back? I mean, like a lot of businesses, they, you don't have the expense unless it actually comes back to you.
No. Once we put the postage on there, we're charged for it. It comes out of our account.
Right. I mean, but there's the option of having a business reply permit number, so that you're only charged if it's actually returned?
That's not the way our present postage meter works with Pitten Bowes.
I know, you don't use a meter at all.
Yeah.
You just have a business reply number, and the post office only charges the business if the letter comes back to you. But that's not how you do it?
No.
You, you're out the postage meter charge, whether they send it back or not?
Yes.
So, that's a dollar for every?
Requested.
Party. Have we ever considered charging the party for their party members to select their candidates?
I don't think we can, you know, as a county, we are required to run an election.
A libertarian might question the... I'm just, I just put on my Rex Bell hat.
Major parties, yeah.
Okay. So, it's a dollar for every, every time somebody requests that, it's a dollar? In just postage, not to count the printing in the paper and the staff time and the...
Correct.
Well, remember, it's a dollar, yeah.
Just postage alone?
Right.
Just curious. And they can request that online, right? By going to your website?
Yes, they can, or they can just call our office.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing, of course, you know, in, just to let commissioners know, as we work through these issues with the number of machines at certain centers, I'll keep you updated. And then, of course, if there's any changes, whereas there won't be any in-person voting. Secondly, tomorrow is our conference call with the Secretary of State. We have filled out surveys requesting help with hand sanitizer, gloves, microfiber wipes for our machines. So, hopefully, that will come up tomorrow. But in the meantime, Primex Plastics has donated 100 face mask shields. And again, we have a volunteer who has offered to make the hand-sewn mask for all of our poll workers. So, we will, you know, of course, do the social distancing, and I think do as much as we can do. Hopefully, we'll get the poll workers, because, you know, the average age of a poll worker in Indiana is 72 to 75 years old. So, that's that vulnerable age group. But we'll offer, you know, the protection with the face mask and the gloves and the hand sanitizer. So, just depending on those people who sign up to do that. And this has changed all of our poll worker training dates. So, just a whole lot of planning that has really created a lot of new challenges for our office.
Do you know if Connie Lawson has got the National Guard standing by like they did in Wisconsin?
I do not. I do not know.
They're a lot younger than 72.
Yeah, yeah. And there has been some changes, you know, for poll workers. They made those changes at the Election Commission meeting, that poll workers do not have to be residents of the county where the election is held. So, you know, if we recruit poll workers from other counties, as long as they're a registered voter in that county, there'll be some things like that that'll be offered moving forward.
All right, well, thank you. Best of luck in getting workers.
Thank you.
All right.
Money's still the same, right?
Yes.
No hazard paid?
No.
Rich, you're up.
Mr. Easton is going to do the presentation.
That was everybody today.
Very good. How are you?
We're doing good.
Great.
These are quotes for drives. This will be for our last and third leg of our data center. That will be housed over here in the annex. These are all solid-state drives, there's not spindles. And that gives us 48 drives plus spares.
Can you hear that okay, Denny?
Yes, I did, uh-huh.
Okay.
Are you looking for a motion to approve this?
He does have three quotes, one from Service Supply, one from PCM, Tiger Direct Business, and CDWG, who has the lowest quote of $16,965. Tiger Direct was 17,466, and Service Supply was 19,008-plus. So, he is looking for a motion to authorize him to purchase from CDWG.
So moved.
Senator?
Please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pouse?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right.
You're ready to go.
Okay. Also, we bought 25 external drives. These are for user data. Since we've got more laptops and everything out in the field, we need to do more backups. So, we have also bought 25 external drives to hold those. And that's...
And how much is that?
That is...
Denny, the 25 external drives are from PCM, Tiger Direct, are $2,875. They're 200, or $115 per unit.
Move for approval.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Pouse?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right.
All right. You're all set.
That is all I have today.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You are very welcome.
Since you're here, I must ask, how's it going with all the remote work that's going on? Has it been kind of an adventure?
It has been an adventure. You know, we've got a lot of people out there that are not in their elements. They're working from different devices. They're working, you know, from their home device into the county device, and they get confused of what device they're working on.
Yes.
And we've got a lot of times where they shut their workstations off instead, you know, that's what they do at home, so, you know, so we have to deal with that. They try to log back in the next day, they can't, because their systems are off. But yeah, it's, we are definitely on fire over there. There's no shortage of calls coming in, so...
Very good. Well, you've done an excellent job in working with all of our staff to be able to work through their problems and work at home, and we certainly do appreciate it, and it shows you what technology can do.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
It really does.
We just are ready for any snowstorm that comes along now, aren't we?
Yes, yes, we are, yeah, so...
Thank you very much. It has really allowed us to keep a lot of people a lot safer. Thank you so much. Steve, we appreciate it.
Yep, very welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Uh-huh.
I know, I always, I have trouble finding, what device did I send that email on? I sent stuff out on three or four different devices.
Devices, uh-huh.
And I have to charge them. I, these guys look after me here, I have to keep charging stuff.
The courthouse HVAC project, the contractor indicates that they will be finished with the balancing of the system Friday, and then we have a walkthrough punch list scheduled for May 5th with the engineer's firm and the contractor. Jail Bond Project continues to move a bit slow, as I've told you in the past, that because of the restrictions within the jail and some of the subcontractors not wanting to work in certain parts of the jail, that project has slowed down quite a bit at this point. The jail and courthouse security equipment, that project is on schedule to, we're ready to have a pre-bid meeting the 29th of April. Not quite sure how that's going to look, simply because, you know, a pre-bid gives the opportunity for anybody who wants to bid to walk through the facilities to get a better idea of what they're bidding on. Probably won't have too much problem with this building and the courthouse and the Health Department, but certainly access to the jail, which is where the bulk of the equipment is. So, that's still a little bit in limbo of how we're going to handle that. And then, you're scheduled to receive the bids on May 13th. And then, nothing, nothing changes yet on the Gardening Ed Leitem office move, haven't heard anything from the state. Although, recently, just as of the last couple of days, you've heard that the governor has started to look towards loosening up some of the restrictions, which then gets into a couple of the other, a couple of the larger discussions, and these are all kind of wrapped into one thing. But I do want to touch on one item. We've had some inquiries from the Tourism Bureau about what we think the fairgrounds' rental availability will look like. Right now, recall, we've not permitted anything to go out there during the month of May, with the exception of voting. What's, any thoughts at this point?
Well, the governor's looking, I think, definitely at the end of April to ease up on some things. I, I guess I still do not see anything at the fairgrounds, because any of those events are going to be larger events. I don't think they're going to go much over 40 or 50 people if he eases up at the end of April or the middle of May. So, the type of events, I think, that tourism is looking at are going to be larger events. And I just don't see anything until, you know, maybe June or July.
I think they're looking to, what information do they need to put out if they have inquiries coming? have inquiries come through there?
Are they asking about indoor or outdoor events?
Both.
Both? I think an outdoor event needs to be evaluated somewhat differently than an indoor event.
Yeah.
You know, if someone wants to have a, an equestrian event or a dog, outdoor dog event, that's different than an indoor wedding reception?
Yeah, it's, it all depends on what it is, you know, and how they gather in the facility, you know, to, to have whatever the program may be. I, there's no answer.
I mean, if we're allowing people to vote in the Coolman Center, again, I think we need to have an overriding theme of consistency.
Well, I agree.
If we are allowing voting in the Coolman Center, that is saying to citizens of Wayne County that we feel it is safe enough for a minimum of twenty-five people to be in this Coolman Center at one time. Right?
Well, it depends how many you let inside the Coolman Center and what you have standing outside six feet apart, but normally you don't have that many people that show up at one time.
Well...
In early voting.
How many machines are we going to set up? We have at least twenty machines at the Coolman Center.
Well, they're going to set the same number of machines up that they always have.
And that's at least twenty. That's...
But that doesn't mean you have twenty people there at the same time.
I'm saying, if we're going to be, that's saying to the public, we, we are ready for twenty people to vote at once. You see what I'm saying? So, we think it's okay to have twenty people in the Coolman Center voting.
I would imagine that, uh, depending on how they set the machines up in there, that you'll have to regulate how many people you actually let in the building at one time.
I think the New York Times commented on Trump's absence of, uh, addressing the large venue gatherings.
Uh-huh.
Uh, yeah, you could certainly distance by doing every three seats and cutting your capacity in stadiums, but what you've got to realize is, those people are going to be in line going to concessions, you're going to be in lines going to the restrooms, and, because that's an ongoing event. Voting, I think, you get in, you get, you vote, you get out.
Right.
I think it's less of an issue, but I agree, Mary Ann, to a point, we, we, we're looking for guidance from some authority, and if in the absence of the governor, then that's going to fall back on you and the Health Department to work something out.
You know, at this point, I would say to the Tourism Department that we need to evaluate each request on its own merit, you know, because there is no way to publish guidelines.
You're right. What is the event? What are they going to do?
What is the event?
Sure.
Is it going to be indoor, outdoor? What's the duration of it? What's the proximity? I mean, they would say, you know, is there going to be human contact? They could say, we want to have a sporting event. Well, is it wrestling or, you know?
Whatever, yeah.
Frisbee golf. Frisbee golf is a different than wrestling, you know?
If I had to guess, they're going to come up in two weeks, and they're going to increase the number to fifty. That, that would be everything I hear, and we've got another call Thursday, tomorrow, uh, with the governor's office, so I'll try and get a feel in there, but what I'm hearing is, it sounds like they may go and open it up to groups of, up to fifty. But you're right, what, fifty doing what?
Well, I think, I would be surprised if it doesn't come with a, with a condition, and that is maintaining social distancing.
Oh, I'm sure the social distancing.
So, the venue may limit the number of, even, in fact, fewer than fifty based upon...
What they're going to do.
Well, or based upon the, the size of the venue. I, I, I really think we need to encourage, uh, Ms. Tinson and Dr. Jettmore to be involved in this discussion with us, too, because if you don't get that, I, I think we still have the open issue that, I don't know we're ever going to get it resolved authoritatively, but to what extent can the local government impose standards that are stricter than those imposed by the governor? I tend to think you can.
Well, you know, if you have fifty people, okay, that's fine, but what room are you going to put that in? If you put fifty people in the Raper Center, that's different than if you put fifty people in the Coolman Center even, or if you put fifty people in this room.
Or the food shack at the fair.
Well, yeah, yeah. Or even in the city of Richmond, in, in their Parks Department, different events.
Which is why you say twenty-five percent of the fire commercials capacity is limited.
But generally, the, you know, what we rent for, you're going to have more than fifty. I mean, that's the intent of the rental, is for them to have a moneymaker where you have the public, more than fifty people come in.
I would say most of the inquiries we get, even a wedding's going to have more than fifty people. I mean, they just are, and that's why I'm saying I think it's going to be way later before those facilities are going to be available.
Define way later.
August, maybe.
All right.
Well, let's hope it's by July eleventh or the fair is in jeopardy.
Well, the fair could be in jeopardy yet again.
We could limit the number of people in, I don't think, Raper. What's the Raper capacity, like?
Oh, gosh.
Two thousand?
Yeah.
Does that count sheep, goats, and chickens?
But, but see, Mary Ann, if you look, let's just take the fair, they're going to have the vendors and the concession stand, and if you look at where the vendors are and how they're set up, in some cases, they're not six or seven feet apart. They're sitting right beside each other in, in one whole stretch out there.
There's, it's going to be way different this year.
Well...
You'll have two or three churches. I mean, if, if they get two or three churches doing lemonade and snow cones, they'll be, you know, there's not going to be that big. What they're hoping to have are food trucks.
No.
And a few churches and ladies quoting, you know, they, they won't have very many vendors. There might be a few political party tents and stuff like that, but very few commercial tents. They're not expected.
So, you don't know. I don't have an answer for you, Steve. I wish I did. I, to me, I just think it's late in the fall before you see anything easing up, because you're right, the events that we hold out there are large events. Hundred, two hundred?
At this point, I think the commissioners have to approve or deny every request. And if it's really, uh, tricky when we run it by the Health Department.
Starting in June? Starting, right now, you, you've said nothing in May.
I think we're going to be pressed even in June. I mean, I...
I mean, do you want this process to come before you in Ju, for the, for any potential rentals in June?
That would be good. We'd have time in May to talk further with Dr. Jettmore and with Christine, see what the, the governor's going to do, uh, you know, that's...
You probably won't get many, if you wait, and I, and I understand your issues, but that's going to segue into opening this building back up, too. What, what information do you need from whom to make these decisions? At some point, you're going to start bringing employees back in here, and it's not going to be just like, you know, turn a switch.
Right.
Um, I, I broached this to you last week. I said, we need to talk about it. If we punt this down until next week again, we're at May first.
Well, we're looking at, we're looking at the shields and the different things.
I think you should start bringing, I think you should start bringing employees back.
I'm not too anxious to get them back here too quick until we're ready. We don't have the shields. We know we're two, three weeks out on the shields that we're looking at before we can put those in place.
Well, that's, that's going, that's another, you want to get into the shield discussion?
Well, that's, that's another old discussion.
Yeah, did you contact that vendor?
Yeah, they've been ordered.
Oh, you didn't get ordered, Chan?
Yeah.
But can bringing employees back and having the public in?
Yeah.
Could be two different dates, so the shields would come into play maybe later when the public is back.
For the, for the public, but if you look at, I mean, I, I think you're going to start, well, not, I don't, I, I know, you know, already you've had, you've been cop, you've been sent emails from at least four different departments wanting certain things to occur, one of them being before they even bring their employees back.
Right.
Um, and then getting back to the shields, you've had a couple more departments want to manufacture their own shields. What's, what am I, what am I telling these folks?
Well, I think we need to be consistent, and what are my concerns on the manufacturing is, well, what, what is it going to look like? I asked one, I said, can you give me a draw? Well, no, I don't have anything. I just don't think we can...
Well, you've got one department said they, you know, they have a fund that's, doesn't require council appropriation, they can buy it themselves.
Yes, but we control the building.
I understand that.
And so, you can't...
But you've really not put that information out but to one department. I, I think...
The one's a bit aggressive.
You're, you're starting to have some questions from department heads and elected officials. I think it would be well that, that you get your elected officials and department heads together and start having this conversation, because you're, these questions are going to start coming up every day, and you, you're meeting once a week.
See, that was the discussion last week when, when we wanted to send kind of a random guidance on how to treat somebody coming back after being sick.
Mr. Bieber.
I would rather we have, you know, some well-thought-out policy, and I know, Denny, you like to give elected officials and department heads, um, free, freedom to do in their department what they would like, but...
That's true.
I, I know, but I think if we do that, we'll, we'll have some inconsistency on, you know, safety and barriers and social distancing and how much they open up, even when they open up, uh, when they bring people back, when they don't, how much public access they give, um, and even, you know, I, I think we need to have more, shall we say, guidance and policy and safety, um, for all of our buildings, not just the annex. And of course, the judges, you know, and, you know, the judges have certainly great input. Mike and Bob have input at Highway, and the Health Department certainly has input, but even in the Health Department, the courthouse and Highway, and even the jail. We need to have some consistency and some overall public health and safety input in all of the buildings, um, because, for example, I was informed by Centerstone that the, um, syringe exchange program is going to open up at our Wayne County Health Department in early May, and I really feel that that should not be a decision by a department head. I really think the commissioners should have a role in deciding where and who and when a Wayne County building opens up to...
I did not know that Christine was the department head. I thought she was, uh, the director, and she was hired by her board, not by the commissioners.
I just feel that we should have a participation in that.
Well, I don't mind it. I agree, we should have some consulting, but I don't want to ever say shall. I'd always prefer to say recommended.
I know they, they had quite a bit of discussion on that, as to what they were going to do on, uh, bringing the syringe program back on a temporary basis until Centerstone opens up. I know they contacted Centerstone to see when Centerstone was going to kind of open back up, and there was going to be a lapse in there, and I forget the gentleman's name that kind of runs all that, who runs the H I...
Chris?
That could be that was here. Um, and so, they decided to temporarily do it so that they could get it back and open again, uh, for those folks.
Oh, they decide, they didn't decide to talk to us about that at all?
They talked to, through the Public Health Board and, and Dr. Jettmore and Christine, and, um, the Health Department decision that they made to, uh, temporarily do that there until Centerstone opens back up.
So, it's okay with you and Denny to have the syringe exchange in one of our buildings in early May?
They're going to do it over at the, uh, in the back part that's not finished, over in the Public Health Buildings where they're, uh, going to do it.
If that's their decision, then I'm okay with it.
Yeah, yeah. They have it pretty well worked out, and I think they're looking at maybe two to three weeks, depending how soon Centerstone goes back, uh, in full operation.
So, Centerstone doesn't think it's safe to have the syringe exchange, but Wayne County does?
I can't answer for Centerstone on there. I'm assuming, uh, Centerstone is kind of shut down like a lot of businesses are, and they're not up and running, and so, uh, they want to get the program back because I think they feel there's a lot of exposure there. That's, that's just for me. That's, I'm not speaking for them, but that's my, in hearing kind of the discussion of their concern in getting that back up for those folks that, uh, are exposed with the needles and everything.
Right, because they do serology testing and swabbing. I mean, this is invasive, this is hepatitis testing. It's not like they just do a drive-through and here's your needles. I mean, there's this, this is invasive kinds of work, and we have not decided when we're going to be opening our buildings to the public.
Correct.
So, you think a department can just decide when our buildings are going to be open?
No, that, that public...
If that's the decision, if that's the decision of their board, then absolutely.
That's a little different than the public health side than what we control over here and stuff, yeah.
So, they, if they decide to do some medical procedure, that's all up to them, and we have no oversight to...
In those cases, we don't have a call on it.
Yeah, that would be my advice. I mean, I think it's very clear, the province of the governing body of the Health Department, the local board.
I, I wish you'd told me they decided to do that.
Well, they just decided on that. It was, uh...
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday's Health.
Yeah, Thursday at their Health Board meeting.
On Tuesday, they announced it, yeah.
That's when I heard about it, yeah.
Well, see, that, there's an impact on the individuals who go to that, you know, moving it around, because I've talked to all the counties that have syringe exchanges, and when you start moving it around and moving it into a public building and that sort of thing, it, it is disruptive and it can be a problem, and...
I don't disagree with you.
Did that, was there any discussion of that at all?
I think this is viewed as a temporary measure.
It is, just a temporary measure.
I think the point is, right now, though, those people are not being served at all, so any level of service...
Is better than what they've had.
Is better than none, because as, as Chris indicated at the Health Board meeting, uh, these people aren't known for being proactive and taking care of their own needs.
And they don't want the COVID to become a problem in those clients, in those clients, yeah.
I know, I've been concerned about being closed, and I was hoping, anyway, okay. But I, my point is, I feel that individual departments need some policy direction.
Well, that's what Steve's talking about, is to, as we begin to talk about this, I think it's going to be a while yet, uh, but, um, we started talking...
Other than the courts, I think you have control over the, the county buildings.
With, with some exception.
With some misaged exceptions, such as the, the Health Department, because they're basically a tenant, if you will. And I agree with Steve, you're going to have to, somewhere along the line, there's going to have to be some process to...
Gradually bring people back and stuff.
But I think you really need to know what the governor's going to do...
Right.
...in the next week.
I know. I'm, there'll be changes through the first of May. The question is, what are those changes going to be that he puts in place? He had, my worst fear is that we come back in here a little too soon, and, uh, I know, uh, we've got taxes, and I really don't want to bring the general public back in here to pay taxes. I want them to do it at the drive-in banks and the mail-in, put them in the post office box we have. I don't want to bring a thousand people in here in the building to pay the property taxes, because we only need one in here to infect this area and pretty soon they need to close us down, so I'm... So I want to be very careful that we don't get a case in here where we have to shut us down. That's my worst fear that I have. And the more people we allow in the building, the more opportunity there is that we could get a positive case. And even bringing our own people back. We've got, two thirds of our people are out or better. And even bringing those back, depending where they've been, it's a decent exposure. And I'm really glad you got your new electron fever things in, that, that'll be very helpful. And I'd like to be able to get more of those so we have them in every office that we have so that even in our work offices, they can take temperatures and take them in the afternoon because you can be all right in the morning, you can be sick in the afternoon.
And I'm really worried about people coming in, in the warmer months, being exposed to the sun. I, I really kind of think we're going to be getting higher temperatures because we've, temperatures we're reading 96, 97, very commonplace in the cooler temperatures. I think they're going to be reading a lot higher with people coming in and the hotter ambient temperature. So people need to be inside for a little bit to get a more accurate reading. So I think you're right, we need to have those no-touch thermometers. This one is $79, if it gives you an idea if we need to buy 30 of them or 40.
We've got one in our office, works quite well, no touch.
Was it about $79 also?
Right, that's, sounds about right.
I've read a lot of reviews on them and the 30 and $40 ones are junk. You have to get back over $60, $70 to get.
I've seen them range in anywhere from 75 up to $100. Yeah, it depends, yeah.
And once you get up around $100, that's for, you know, to do a baby's ear. I don't think we really need that flexibility. This one seems to have all the flexibility, it has a memory so you get to go back to the last 32 readings, which could be interesting. Let's say you, you know, you want to really record one individual several times, let's go back and see, what was that, an hour ago, two hours ago? You can make a list and just double check. And so it's got a memory in it, which is kind of nice. I like the idea of every department having.
Yes, I, I think they should have it, yeah.
And I think what we're doing is kind of developing some policies here.
Well, the same as the protective screening and the policies and then even within their individual offices, are they separated in those offices? You know, are their desks six feet apart? And I think in most of our cases, they, they are, that we'll be in pretty good shape that way. But that's something we need to look at to make sure they are and.
You know, we've had in this building and even in the courthouse, a very open environment. We've not talked about having dividers within these open departments. Denny, how do you feel about having dividers inside open departments to kind of protect people from one another? You know, we say six feet, but you and I know a sneeze goes more than six feet.
I, I think we should trust the judgment of our elected officials and department heads. They know what six feet is. We don't need to spend that kind of money.
Okay.
Just for them.
And I, I have no opinion on that matter.
Well, they do make also, and Steve and I have looked at those also, they do make desk shields also that a person's sitting at a desk, there's a smaller shield that's available that if, you know, if they happen to sneeze at their desk, that would confine it right to their area. So there are quite a few different things out there.
Expensive.
Right. And it, it depends, you know, how far we finally decide we need to go. We definitely know those that are talking to the general public at the counters and so on, we definitely have to have the shields there. The question is what type, Steve is right, two of the offices have had a carpenter come in to look at it to try and build something for them. My only question is, okay, what does that look like? I think we have to be concerned as to what we purchased, as to what it looks like and what, how we present that to the public. We certainly don't want to look junky, you know? We want to look professional in there. And there's all types. You have the hang down from the ceiling or where they have just a piece of plastic and it, and it will say stop above counters like that. So that's what they have in the post office in some of the places. They have the kind you saw at CVS, you know, that sit on the counter.
And I saw those, they're, they're sharp.
And they have.
They look good, they're transparent.
For you, yeah, there's some nice looking ones out there that we could put here and we'd still have a very professional look. And the ones that Steve ordered, I think, have a professional look to them. And once we get those in, we can try those and see how they work and stuff. And I think they're high enough to block any sneezes or anything from an individual and they're white enough. I guess I don't.
Did you get them 30 inches by, 37?
Yeah, some have talked to us, Mary Ann, about a solid plastic sheet all the way across and I'm not sure we need to do that. And that's more expensive and costly to do that. And I just don't think that the other shields will confine something if somebody actually coughs or something. And, and they look very professional once we get them in here in about two weeks. So it'll be again about the first of May when those show up, if they're not back ordered, which happens to us.
Have you got a tracking number or anything on them yet? What's the ETA on the?
Three to five days.
Well, I know they say that, but they give you a tracking them? I'm a little bit wounded after.
After your experience?
I have no reason not to expect them the first of the week.
Okay. Jennifer's word here.
Amanda.
Oh, Amanda.
I know Debbie Barry sent over a flyer or two from a company that supplies banks and so on. And those look very nice also and would fit in teller cages and some they had smaller and bigger ones too. But they all look pretty professionally well done, yeah.
Well, you've been talking to sneeze guards, there's more to that than this.
Yes.
There's, you know, I, I still think.
That's just one element.
I still think that you should have a meeting with department heads and elected officials because I think there's other departments that may have some other needs that you don't even hear about yet. And my department, for example, I've, I've been asked to move some workstations, which involves moving electricity, IT pulling some, some cabling, putting up a wall. I mean, they're, my department will not be able to respond quickly if you wait, say, okay, Monday you're going to bring in employees. We just can't do it. I, I, I think that you should be in the planning stage. Those plans could change, but I still think you should be having that conversation with department heads and elected officials. I still think that you need to plan and it's a soft date, but you want to bring employees back, May 5th, you can always move that. But I, I think you need to start making some definitive plans. That could change, I understand that, but without, that's my words.
I got you down there, I'll set it up.
I think we need to hear from the governor next Tuesday. He's going to make announcement regarding.
No basic major changes, I think, then, yeah.
Right, because May 1 is next Friday. And he's going to, at his briefing on Tuesday, I think, make announcements about what happens May 1. And then after, in fact, I think next, next Wednesday, the 29th, would be a good time to meet with department heads and elected officials. What do you think, Ken, 29th?
We could do that or even.
And then, and then the next question, you know, going back to these sneeze guards, you, you've indicated that you didn't want the treasurer to build their own, but now you've had a couple of other departments indicate that they want those to be built their own. Who, who's going to be paying for this stuff? Who do you want me to refer these folks to? You? Not, they can't do anything until they talk to you?
That's all right.
They can't do that.
I, I don't want the individual departments just doing their stuff.
And that's what I, and that's, and that's my point.
And the two that have been the most aggressive, I have told them that.
Something needs to go out to the department heads and elected officials definitively.
That we're going to have a meeting on the 29th of April to discuss.
Something, because they're getting antsy.
Cool your jets for a minute.
Yeah. And, okay.
So at this point, we have not.
Decided anything.
When we are going to bring everybody back or when we're opening up the building.
We've not decided anything and we may allow you to come in June to the fairground. That's what we decided.
Just bring all requests, all requests will be considered on their individual merit.
So, so do I bring those to you weekly?
Yeah.
Okay.
We meet often enough.
Last item I have, you know, I've been talking with the, the folks with the horse arena for a good while and I know, Mary Ann, you've called the extension office. Do you have a plan or a sacred cow in this that's different than what the horse folks have?
I don't know what this is.
Sacred horse.
Sacred, what, what?
I mean, you, you called and asked them what they needed? Did they tell you what they needed?
At the horse arena?
Yeah, what they needed for the horse arena.
I don't have the detail. They were just so delighted that we gave them a tentative, you mean regarding the track itself?
Yeah, the, the horse arena itself, as to what improvements are going to be made to that.
No, I kind of stepped back when you started meeting with them and they worked out some.
I just want to make sure that something else didn't go. My, my dealings have been with Cheryl Daggy, who's the president of the Horse Association. Now, so the, they have a, they have a plan to put a drainage system in the facility, make the arena a bit smaller. Ours is larger than most and they've got some donations from Lowe's to, to replace that fencing. They've got a special rate to install some underground piping for extra drainage and then to bring in some, some fill. And now that the fair's been pushed back and the weather's, they've got a little more time now to get that done, their question is, would they, would we split the cost with them on upgrading this facility? Not to exceed $7,500, our cost.
That's not the budget, it's us.
Do you have a recommendation, Steve?
I recommend that we do that. I think it's, we've talked about this for several years. It, it's, it's not an arena that we can use for our rentals because that's our plan is to make it available for, you know, a money-making opportunity for us. I do have up to $7,500, I think that's in the fair budget, the fairgrounds budget that we can expend.
I mean, it's up, we can't, as it is, I, I don't think you finished that sentence. As it is right now, it is not a money-making.
That's correct.
Venue.
That's correct.
But with these improvements, we can make it available.
That's right.
To other organizations and it could pay for itself in a year.
I, I think that is correct. And so.
All right, I moved, I moved, let's go, do it.
Denny moved, hey, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Hi.
Mrs. Thuss.
Aye, aye, aye.
Mr. Powell.
Hi, motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Steve, quickly, where are we on the properties the city wants to acquire? Has the deed been, have the deeds been done and property transferred to commissioners yet or do we know that? I know that everything's been kind of delayed, but.
It, it should be, but I need to check to make sure that is correct.
I guess we need to follow up.
The, the timing, it should have been done, but I can't tell you that it has. Yeah.
Before you sit down, you were the secret to the answer to the questions on the health center's lease. Are there any other questions outstanding that we need to discuss or does that allow you to move forward with the lease?
Well, I brought, I pulled that up. As Ron said, we need to discuss it. And I think we have all of Steve's answers here. And so I think the easiest thing to do, we got 28 different items. Ron, you just want to look at this, we'll talk about it right now, we'll just start at one and go through. Have you got time?
Sure.
Some of this, I think, is fairly easy that we could whip right straight through this.
I, I think on the first page, the only issue, I'm, I'm, based on my contacts with Steve, I am of the, I am of the opinion that the county should purchase, not help, not the public health department, but the county should purchase a replacement control box for the message sign. And the lease would provide that maintenance of that message board or sign during the term of the lease will be the responsibility of the tenant. So I agree with Steve's recommendations on that and I would suggest you, that would be the basis for my next draft.
Okay, I don't.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem.
That's reasonable.
Yeah.
Steve, I'm probably going to specifically have a section on signage.
Okay.
Added and I'm going to incorporate Steve's advice on those five signs.
Signs, all right.
Unless someone has a problem, they seem to make sense to me.
No, it does, right. I agree.
I don't know where we are on billing and collecting reimbursed indirect costs for the first three months of this year. I mean.
We have not, we've not billed them for the indirect costs for the first three months of this year.
I would have thought it'd been awfully tight because we usually do that quarterly and our ears doing it.
Right.
So it just ended, okay, we, we'll talk about that, but that'll be taken care of.
Sprinkler system.
We, we just had to do some follow up, find out what the contract is there. You know, again, we know we're going to have indirect costs that are going to accrue even after June 1, that'll be reimbursed to the county. Depending on how quickly the health center feels it can ramp up, if you will, and take those on itself. And I think that needs to be a separate schedule of items that we can put, look at, look at. But that sprinkler system, if it, if we have a combined maintenance contract for all our sprinklers, then it makes sense to try to allocate that out, keep the contract with us and maintain it.
That would be my thought.
And then.
Then just charge them.
And then charge them a prorated amount like we would if we were continuing status quo.
Yeah, I, I would agree. That makes all the sense in the.
Now, do you understand what I said there about monitoring a firearm system though?
I agree, that should be a third party, shouldn't be us.
That, if they want to have it monitored, I don't know what.
Well, it needs to be monitored. I mean, if, if there's a.
Well, it needs to be monitored, but right now, we're monitoring our own, aren't we?
Correct, because it didn't make sense that we go through a third party, then it dials, they call our night on one.
I understand, but.
But since that.
They're going to have to be that. They're going to have to do their own monitoring.
Correct. It makes sense to me that we shouldn't monitor, we shouldn't be the monitoring agency for a private company.
And what, are there implications as far as, there has to be some kind of electronic or.
It has to be a dial.
A dial machine, yeah.
That actually dials the monitoring.
So there, will there be a need to purchase that?
Yeah. Let me, I'll follow up on what that was about as far as.
But I think the concept, we agree on, you know.
Right, yeah.
The generator's now no longer an issue, rekeying the building, I'm, I'm just asking advice. I think certainly Steve needs one, commissioners need one, a key. Beyond that, I don't know that, what, what the level of need would be.
I think that's enough, yeah.
Would anybody responding to an after hour emergency of any sort, A, will we?
See, an after hour emergency would go to one of their people, wouldn't go to us.
For example, if they, if the generator, if, if there's a power outage and the generator doesn't start, then there's a thing in place that calls somebody so that those vaccines, you know, perish.
Right.
And always, that has called a health department employee and it doesn't call us. If there's a fire alarm though, it calls both. If there's a fire alarm, though, it calls both. We get a, we get notification of it, as well as the health department person gets notification.
I can't hear, Steve.
What he was saying is, in the health department, that the alarm system on the, say, the vaccine, if that gets below temperature, it automatically calls one of the health department employees. If it's a fire currently, the health department's notified, as well as our 911.
Well, it makes sense to me that if we're no longer occupying even a part of the building, that it would be up to the health center to have its own keys and its own person designated to be the access point to allow entry by emergency personnel, not us.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now, Denny?
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Any concerns about basically allowing options to renew, given the fact that we're not trying to set the rent on the renewal, I mean...
I think it's a good idea.
I don't see any downside unless there's...
Oh, I want to keep them there, I want to keep it rented.
Yeah, if they're, if they're doing well, I think we want to keep them there, because they're filling the public need.
Oh, I agree.
Give them what they want.
And, you know, I'll talk with Rick about whether we want to incorporate some type of index to give us some parameters, so we don't have to...
Argue that, I agree.
End up paying another mediator for $500 an hour to solve the problems. The HVAC credit, I guess I have a concern, because we've talked conceptually about what's going to happen with that program income fund, and I don't think we know that yet, and I think...
Of course, that's a little separate issue from the credit.
Well, not really, I see, you know, we know the $64,000 credit...
Right, is there.
Is theirs, and it's not federal monies, it's monies that were paid as rent. I, in anticipation of an HVAC project that didn't happen, I think they're willing, they indicated a willingness to leave on deposit a couple of hundred thousand dollars for a period of time, for if there are any unforeseen cost expenses, audit expenses, demands, I don't know. But I'm not sure what good that does, if we can't use it to replenish a general fund or the public health, on the public health side of things. In other words, if that money can, is going to maintain its federal character, what good's that reserved to us? Those are issues I don't have the answer to, and I don't think anybody does until we...
Well, we know better after the phone call.
And a phone.
Thursday.
Well, that's not going to be Thursday's phone call, that's not the purpose of Thursday's phone call. In fact, you've only scheduled it a half an hour, so, and we'll talk about that at the end. That, the contact with Hershey needs to be made and generated, and I'll get with Kim on that, but sooner rather than better. I don't see a whole lot on that page. Steve did tell me the utilities are separately metered, so there shouldn't be any capital expense in acquiring a new metering. And then he clarified on the security system that, basically, they're on their own once ours goes in, so, again, timeline, do you have any idea when we might have ours in? Late summer?
Yeah.
Say, by September 1, is that a kind of a target date right now?
Yeah.
Rick raises a good point. Triple nets typically have an exception if you have a major system failure. In other words, if you need a new roof, that's not normally the tenant's. Now, if you have a roof leak, that's a different deal, so probably there needs to be some articulated standard of what constitutes a major repair versus a minor repair, if you will, that would be the tenant's responsibility. And I'm open for suggestions, but the most obvious criteria would be the estimated cost to repair or replace. If it exceeds X dollars, then it's going to be deemed that of the landlord, owner, if it's under that, then it's that of the tenant occupier, and I don't know what that number is, but...
Well, also, let's think about what we have, the experience we've had over there. If it's one of their delivery trucks delivering something, they run into our canopy, which has happened a couple of times, it ought to be their expense, or that insurance, not our expense.
Well, of course, the big expense is going to be the air conditioning, the HVAC.
Well, that's carved out, we're going to maintain the present system.
Right.
You know, that'll be our deal.
So, that is already addressed in the lease?
It's in there, yeah.
That was part of, even part of the mediation agreement, I think.
That's pretty normal, yeah.
We're not agreeing if it fails, and we can't Band-Aid it anymore, then, you know, the problem's their problem at that point.
Okay, I forgot how that was built.
I know, and we may get pushback on that, I don't know what, what's your thoughts on the condition of the system? If we're looking at a three-year lease, is, are we going to hold our breath the last two or so?
Oh, it's not good.
Well, it's okay, it's just...
I know, I know the balancing isn't being good, but then you look at what you've done to the interior structures, if you will, through the various build-outs that have made an undersized system even less efficient.
And you have no idea what they're going to want to do inside the building on that north side.
Well, we want to, that's another point, I'm going to make sure we get, we see those plans, look at them, and have a reasonable opportunity to comment on them, and, you know, they need, really, they need our approvals, what it's going to be, because as Rick suggested...
Well, they put out petitions that have really changed the heating and cooling system, and...
Well, for example, when they started a new program for dental...
They had six new chairs, yeah.
We had to install, you know, additional electric, additional lighting, air lines, there were some additional things that were added to the building just to have that particular program, not anything, what are the new programs they've had.
Well, we're not going to do that, they're going, they're doing their own build-out.
That's what I'm saying, if there's modifications that need to be done to accommodate one of their programs.
I can't imagine how any modification of the interior is going to enhance the efficiency of the HVAC system that's already inefficient.
And that's where I'm going with this, if they modify it even more, it makes it more inefficient, and then we get those kind of calls, if the system throws up, because, you know, it's running constantly.
Well, we're still $600,000 ahead, less $64,000 they paid. Okay, and your handicap ramp, that helps, you know, I mean, I don't know how bad it is, but I assume eventually it'll get on our to-do list.
It's not really that bad, I've looked at that backside.
I know I said in here, delay it, but I see no, it was put in there, first of all, I don't even know why it's put in there, other than it also serves the delivery door.
Delivery, so obviously somebody's got something on a...
Something that's heavy that needs to be brought into the building, it's not...
That's how they bring it in, yeah.
Gotcha. And the handicap ramp is at the main entrance.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, trash servicing, probably something that will continue, at least will, until June 1, and after that, I guess...
I think it's their responsibility, they need to get their own dumpsters, and they need to get their own removal, yeah.
Apparently, there's not a dumpster there, we haul it to our dumpster.
Right, I understand that, and you, we want to have some input on where they place their dumpster.
Well, and we were initially going to place one in where their doctors park, and, I mean, but we're giving them X number of spaces, so it should be, the dumpster for them should be in their space.
In their spaces, exactly.
Rather than in our spaces, to the south. But having said that, if you put it one of their spaces, and the dumpster out in the middle of the parking lot, that's very visible, so it probably should go back on Second Street, you know, near that entrance off Second Street to the north a little bit, but in any event, they need to have their own dumpster.
Right.
Where they want to place it, for Eric to be used, I guess, just to check.
I don't see any other really substantive issues on, through page 15.
Actually, there are very few comments, really. I think we're making good progress, Ron. You've done a good job in putting this all together.
Well, and they, they've been helpful, and their points are pretty good, you know, good questions, most of them.
Right, very good.
I'm so glad Hershey's made their decision, the spirit of cooperation has really gone up now that the angst has gone down.
Yeah, and I, I think there's some paranoia over there, and since we're on TV, I don't mind saying it, as it relates to the program income fund, I think, I can only speak from all the contacts I've observed, we all have, even counsel, that until that conference call with Ursa, where there was some fairly loose language used by Ursa as to that being county money, I don't think anybody ever doubted the proposition that that would be seed money for the next FQHC. All I want to make sure is that we have everyone's blessing who has a dog in the fight, and that would be Ursa and the State Board of Accounts before that money gets transferred anywhere after the end of the project period, and I think we really wait until then. In the meantime, I think we've got to be vigilant, and that's, it falls on Kim, because she's, she's the one who's next on the line in the audit process, to make sure that expenditures aren't being taken out of program income, that are beyond the regional scope of the project in an attempt to seed the next project, because that would not be appropriate, in my opinion, so it could be a contentious two or three months, we're looking at. We've already seen the one $60,000 retainer that we nixed, because that was the basis of, of one of the two audit exceptions, and that is, even the Fed said, you've got to comply with state standards, and the State Board of Accounts does not allow advanced payment for services, which is what a retainer really is. So, that's just something we're going to have to watch, but I mean, you know, and that then relates to that $64,000 credit, I know if we can't access, if we can't use that program income fund to give us some security of unforeseen expenses, say, for the next year after the separation, then I think at a minimum, I want some type of indemnification language from both, both entities, WellCare and Wayne County Community Health Center, Inc. There's going to be a merger at some point, I'm not sure who's going to be the surviving entity, but I want to make sure that we have separate indemnification undertakings, I don't know what assets they'll have that aren't federal monies, but it's better than not having anything, so, those are just ideas I have, as far as new things will show up in the lease that we haven't really talked about, because we're all dealing...
What about the equipment, Ron? We had talked about the possibility within the lease, we put in there, you know, a dollar or whatever it would be, and...
I think, since they cut their grant, it's almost like we were arguing over who got the equipment, now neither, now neither side wants it, it's pretty much what we're finding out, because I think Eric feels like he can buy new in a lot of the stuff, so, I, I don't know where that stands, and obviously Christine's got more to do than argue about chairs around her conference tables right now, and I don't want to bug her too much, but, I don't know, what are your thoughts, what are the remaining issues that you see? I know they wanted those built-in cabinets, part of them returned, I wasn't sure what...
They're not going back.
And they're not going to go back, okay. Why don't I do this, why don't I, we just reflect this back to them, saying, you know, as far as I know, we can live with the status quo, is there anything they have that we really need that we don't have?
Well, I gave you that list, you know, it had about six different items on it that she was still interested in.
Okay, I'll take a look at that then.
Okay, that's the last meeting that we had on, is when we looked at all the equipment, everything, and if you've kind of misplaced that, I'll look in my file.
I've got it here someplace, I just saw it this morning, but I'll have to find it, okay. So, and I think that's really it, then.
There were several items on there that she still wanted, Jim, but nothing major.
Have you had any feedback on the records that you've secured?
I've made it known that our position is that they're all alarms.
Now, what about, even those that are still in the health center right now, or are there...
I think those, I think we, I think I'm understanding that anything that we needed is out of the health center.
You need what?
Anything that...
Any records that we needed, you mean?
That we needed are out of the health center.
Okay, so there, I mean, because they have an obligation to maintain...
Well, certain records have to stay with them, yes.
Because they're the healthcare provider, and every, the statute...
And remember, those were on another, a lot of them were on a server elsewhere, so I think, I think that the record issue has pretty well been resolved.
Okay.
Do you recall anything that...
Well, I haven't heard any discussion recently, we haven't brought it up about records. My last recall was certain records definitely had to stay with them, and certain records had to stay with us.
And those being buildings are staying with us.
So, that's really it, now, anything, I'm not, any other issues, I mean, the equipment, we'll have to track that down.
The Firefox, Firefox...
Well, the van, I mean, I, I'll get an opinion on that, but I think that goes with the health center, I don't think it, I don't think it's counties, from what I've been reading.
The box, the electronic box, the Firefox, or whatever.
Well, I think we are, I don't think, I think the more likely scenario is, you know, unintentionally, I'm sure, but it's been misplaced, it's probably thrown away, and it would have been done by, maybe by someone in county health, but it probably would have been done by us, as we aided in the move of public health, so I think that just needs to be a county expenditure.
Did we just give them credit on that, that, what, $1,500, and that one new one cost?
That's what A-plus indicator did cost.
What cost, so...
Well, I mean, it would be better if they're going to be the end user, if they want to go ahead and buy the computer, or whatever they need to do, buy the box and have it programmed to their computers, I mean, Rich can help them do that, the latter part, probably.
I think A-plus does it all.
They do it?
Yeah.
Well, I think it ought to be our expense, whether we do it as a credit or we pay for it, I don't, I don't know, that makes a big difference.
I guess you do credit towards their first quarter during costs.
We could do that, or we have that bill for $2,500 that we were sending to them, we could knock $1,500 off of that.
What bill is that?
The one that I gave you on the two workstations from Friends, for the two workstations.
I hold that invoice you gave to me, hold.
I need to see it.
Yeah, I thought we gave you a copy too, Ron, of that.
I didn't.
Okay, I know in your file you got one, Ron, but we can give you another one, yeah, yeah.
Two workstations from Friends.
So, were two stations needed that you called?
A desk, you mean?
Right.
Yeah, well, I thought we agreed we were going ahead and paid those.
No, that was one of those cases where we didn't take, one was Kim Flanagan's desk, that she wanted to keep, and we were going to do Kim Flanagan, Julie, that was in one of these zones, so we went ahead and we ordered the desk that we needed to get them in, get them in place, the cost was $2,500, for that's what it was.
$2,500 for two desks?
Uh-huh.
But they were willing to give us Julie's, but not Kim's.
Didn't want to do that, but we had to have it before they were willing to give the desks up, so we went ahead.
We'll try, I can see them coming back and saying, we'll pay for half of that, one station.
That's what I said, give them the credit on the $1,500.
I see, now you know why I wouldn't want to bug Christine with this stuff. Bad enough, Rick and I are doing it.
Is it okay if I just sit this one out, Ron?
It gets...
All right, if you would, give me a copy of that, that'll be, if nothing else, a potential reminder, that's... Denny, and maybe Beth, Denny, Beth, I lost track of where the 911 inter-local with the city for 2020 stands, I think we'd done a draft of it, and I don't know if it made its way across the street or not, or if it's been signed on its way back to us... or not, or if it's been signed on its way back to us, or if it's just kind of out there in COVID-19 limbo.
I did talk to Tammy downstairs, it went across the street several months ago.
Yeah.
Nothing's been returned, and they believe that it's in AJ's hands.
Okay, I'll follow up with AJ. He's working from home, so we don't have a lot of time to interact, but I'll follow up. Thanks.
And on that same note, Denny or Ron, one of you have a counter resolution from building for them to accepting the car?
Yeah, I did not get it, but I watched, I was aware that at their meeting, they did adopt that resolution.
I saw AJ shared a draft of it before they had adopted it, and I was fine with it. I just assumed it would eventually make its way after it was enacted.
And I followed up with Mr. Craig yesterday, and I thought he said he emailed it to both of you, but I can't have the title signed off until we get that counter resolution. And it is not in session, correct?
I don't have that.
So please call Terry and tell him that you need to have it.
Do you want Beth to call?
Well, I called yesterday.
She called yesterday, Denny.
And you said that these two have...
Yeah, but instead of giving it to her, he just told her he already sent it to me and Ron, and that's not true.
Okay.
So you should send it to her.
Yeah, Terry and I have enough contacts that he wouldn't make it to my spam folders, and I don't think I've seen anything.
All right, I'll get it, I'll tell him I need it.
All right, thank you.
Matthew Kane wanted you to know that the MOU between Union County and Wayne County for dispatch, emergency dispatch, has been signed by all parties and is in place.
Very good.
Good.
And then the last thing I have, the State of Indiana, Indiana Criminal Justice Institute sent their award letter for the drug free Wayne County. $64,460, 25% to each group of prevention, education, treatment, and intervention, criminal justice services, and admin. There's a thought that commissioners, you are to approve this at this juncture. It's, that's kind of news to me, but if we could go on record that...
So we're just accepting that?
I think you're accepting it.
What are the uses?
It's just the four categories, prevention, education, treatment, intervention.
And it's criminal justice, general?
Criminal justice services and admin, 25% to each group. Then our local partnership typically comes to you. It lets you know...
How they break it down.
...how that $16,000 in each category, you give it up.
Is that the fund that they did some after proms for some of the schools?
Exactly, exactly.
Well, Chair, so entertaining motion to accept those dollars. Chair, a second, Denny?
Second.
Could please call the roll?
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mrs. Butters?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye, motion carries. Do you have anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, Mary Ann, do you have anything?
Nope.
Ron, anything else?
I don't believe so.
I have one thing, Denny.
I do have one. Go ahead, Denny.
Go ahead, Denny.
I got a call from Wayne County Foundation, and they have some funds available for any segment of our community that is underserved or perhaps not served at all, and are in need of temporary funds, and they've already contacted the, all the trustees. So this is outside of what the trustees are already doing. So they wanted us to know if we knew anything or knew of any underserved portions of our population, to let them know.
Yes, I am aware of that. I do have a copy of their letter and the parameters of how they will grant that money to individuals, and so it's a good fund, yes.
And the reason they're calling is apparently no one has applied, outside of the trustees.
Okay. All right.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Do we want to talk a little bit about the conference call Thursday? I don't, I don't know that any of us are quote invited, other than the auditor, but I think...
I invited President Plaster to be there, and I assume you'll be there. Kimberly will be there on that call. I can be there, I may be a little late. I have a teleconference doctor's appointment starting at 1:45, so that shouldn't take very long.
Well, the fundamental purpose of the call is to figure out how, from our perspective, how the health center is going to use the benevolent $100,000 that just landed in their pockets under the CARES Act. And obviously, their original project did not contemplate that, those monies, or do anything of the nature of a COVID-19 SARS response. So it appears to me, in wake of the announcement that Public Health made yesterday about their critical shortage, a logical use of this that would be compatible with the general purpose would be for PPE purchases to be made and available through the public health to the nursing homes and what have you that are now in short supply.
Would we think any discussion of any build-out in our public health nursing facility that we need this desperately?
I think, I mean, I think the tighter the nexus to COVID-19, the better, greater the likelihood to fly. I mean, I would propose we listen to see what they have in mind, but I would plant the seed with Rick and Eric in advance if they, if you think it's worthwhile.
If we could use part of that for the build-out, that'd be great.
For their build-out?
Yeah, because they'd be checking COVID-19 patients and stuff out of the facility.
Hopefully not forever.
Well, my concern about that is, I just had a conversation with Rick yesterday, and as it's structured now, I don't think they need to worry about bidding their build-out. It's not, it doesn't meet the definition of a public work because it's not being funded by tax funds from a political subdivision. So they don't have to bid it. My concern is if they're using direct federal dollars for that, even partially, then that is that going to have Davis Bacon Act implications? Is it going to require them to be bidding it? I don't think they're worried about bidding as much as they are that there are time constraints that they're really operating under, that they think they'd be slowed down by the bidding process itself, so... And again, I have all I can do to represent my own clients, but these are their problems and their issues, but that may be one they want to address, but they may be, they're to be careful what they ask for. There may be some secondary implications.
So at this point, our health department is saying the exclusive need is for PPE and...
No, I don't know if they're saying that. I would touch base with Christine. I just know there was an announcement in the news this morning that they had exhausted their inventory of PPE for distribution to nursing homes. And I don't know what level that means, and how much it would cost to replenish that inventory, but I mean, that seems to be the concern everybody has, you know.
Well, we do have a considerable amount on order, and I just, I say on order, it's supposed to be here the end of April. So if all of that comes in, we'll be in, we'll have pretty good supplies, so we'll have over 10,000 of the more economical masks, and we'll have several thousand of the KN-95 masks also, if all that comes in on schedule. So we'll be able to replenish a little bit. But in some cases, some of those facilities, I know one of the facilities, they wanted 45,000 masks is what they asked us for, and this was a nonprofit that doesn't pay any property taxes, and they're asking us for 45,000 masks. My answer to that was, they need to source that themselves, and that we can't supply those items to them, not in our budget either, and...
And I don't want to misspeak, but I, my impression is that the health center is doing very little in the way of COVID-19 treatment.
I asked Eric about that a couple of weeks ago, and they really have not had inquiries for that.
I asked Rick last week, and he said, I said, are you guys, are the doctors there? Are you even open? He said, we're open, but we're not getting any traffic.
They are just not...
Because most of their procedures would not be considered, you know, major procedures, and they're the kind that ought to be deferred under the guidelines for nonessential medical services, so...
I was surprised that their patients, they just don't fit the profile, much younger profile.
Well, that's the purpose of the call. How are you going to spend this $100,000 between now and May 31st?
I don't know.
Now, the $400,000 that WellCare is receiving, that'll be a subject of a second call with just WellCare, that's fine.
On that $100,000, is that for the county, or is that the health center side?
It's the health center. It's the health center.
Wow. Well, I know they are not really excited about treating COVID, but from a wellness standpoint, my feeling is America will get back to work once we get the antibody testing widely distributed, because there are so many people who are immune and not aware.
To where they could be plasma donors.
Right, they could be plasma donors.
Well, that would certainly, I don't know how big a dent that would make. I don't know how much, A, are the tests that's available? I get the idea they're becoming more available.
Well, the man in charge of that said there are at least 90 American manufacturers. The problem is it's all in China right now. They've only approved four providers.
There's a component of all the tests that China has, it's pretty much an exclusive on the transition.
But there's 90 American manufacturers that are under consideration and going through it. Once that breaks open and FDA allows American manufacturers to unleash these antibody tests, they will be extremely cheap.
I think, I think we all agree there's, and I'm not sure that there's going to be any disagreement coming from the other side of the street on this, but I think the monies could be better spent than buying billboards, you know.
Right.
I think there's a need for tangible purchases that'll directly address the COVID-19 emergency at a local level for the benefit of the public.
Because, you see, like we, if we knew, for example, in, especially first responders in our highway department, you know, we, if we knew that 10% of our workforce was immune, they could be the ones that were up front at the counter instead of in the back, you know? And first responders who are immune can have more direct contact with the public. That's how we're going to get everybody back to work. But I would hope that you could address in that phone call the availability of antibody testing. Because I think that is essential, and it needs to be very widespread.
That's all I've got, then.
Okay, well, I think we all agree, yeah, if we could get the testing, once it's finally available out there, there isn't any doubt about that.
Well, we're on the brink of it, they said it's just, you know, imminent, but...
But, yeah. Okay, anything else? If not, we'll adjourn by general consent.